Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Certainly. President DeSandro.
Here.
Vice President Brazington. Secretary Steppik, here. Treasurer Guthrie.
Here.
Trustee Donnelly.
Here.
Trustee Schaefer.
Here.
Trustee Bailey.
Here.
Welcome.
Any changes to the agenda? None. Item 3, consent agenda, which is meeting minutes of October 10th, 2017, and bills payable for September of 2017. Motion, please. Mr. Steppik.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support?
Support.
Support, Mrs. Guthrie? Any discussion? There was a question asked by Dr. Brazington about some supplies that were purchased. She emailed myself and Mr. Throne, and they were for, was it share? It was, I'm sorry, it was for a homeschool partnership, thank you. So I just wanted to bring that up. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item 4. OES presentation on their computer program. You look a little old for an elementary student. Just a couple of years.
Good evening, thank you for joining us at OES. Our gift to you tonight is a little bit of a historical relic. Back in the day, I used to be guaranteed the March meeting, and so for March's reading month, we always gave you a gift that we'd collect back from you at the end of the meeting. Inside of these, you will find your name or a stamp with your name. These will go in our library in your honor. It made a lot more sense to do it in March, but we've just kind of cut with the tradition. So these will sit in our library, hopefully until the end of time. We absolutely appreciate all that you do, and we know that obviously reading is the most important thing that we do, so we felt that that's always been a logical gift. The second thing that I have for you, very quickly before I introduce Mrs. The Iron Herd Girls, are the last two classrooms, Mrs. Bartlow and Mrs. Terries, I left open tonight, and I'm hoping that maybe during one of the breaks or at some point today, you'll take a minute and just peek. Because if you look inside, you'll notice that there's some things that are missing. And the main thing that's missing is desks and traditional chairs. I have four teachers in the building right now that are experimenting with alternative seating. Mrs. Viviano and Mr. Robidek are the other two, but their classrooms are all the way down in the first hallway. But Mrs. Terri and Mrs. Bartlow are also doing the same experiment. So it's worth kind of taking a look in the room and just getting a little bit of a feel for some of the things that we're exploring that maybe are beyond just curriculum and things like that. It's definitely worth a look, and it definitely has a little bit of a different look if you peek your head in. So I just hope that you can take that opportunity to just peek your head in one of those two rooms tonight. Now I am out of the way, I'm going to introduce Mrs. Viviano and friends tonight. They have a great presentation for you and a little bit of a challenge for you tonight.
I'm gonna let the kids take it away because they really are running the show, they're my bosses tonight, so.
Hi, my name's Amelia, and I want to show you one way to use technology in our classroom. We use something called Kahoot, thank you for listening, now onto Alexis.
We use Kahoot to review and deepen our understandings of concepts in a fun and exciting way. Now onto Lexi.
You can use Kahoot for any subject, so far this year we used it to practice math and repeat items, now Hazel.
Kahoots can be made at school or at home with a group or by yourself, and it's really fun. Thank you, and here's Rachel.
In the game Kahoot, there's a leaderboard that encourages healthy competition. We have made a special Kahoot dress for you, thank you for listening, now let's play.
Okay, you want to make sure they're on the right spot, and I'll fill them. All right, your kids can go in and log in just like I'm doing to make their own Kahoots. I was hoping a scary movie would keep them. Scary.
Do you have the, you might need to hit the power on the speaker there, Mrs. Viviano.
Yeah. All right, is this ready? Okay, so in front of you it says to enter a game pen.
Mrs. Viviano, you're muted in the bottom right if you want that muted.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you. It's a little spooky around here, don't be scared. Okay. So then you put your usernames here. And you'll see that when you're logged in, you'll see your name up on the screen.
Subs, everybody.
You guys ready? Who's on this one? What part of an animal do we Americans use? Are we supposed to answer this?
Yeah, dancing.
Where?
So you put it kind of, did it come up? Uh-oh.
We don't have that on us. You just have, you gotta go off of that?
Yeah. There'll be a, there'll be a clue.
Oh, you got one, you got it. No, but I couldn't see.
Okay. Wow, that was a little slower.
It only has the question on it here, all you see is like a little box with these symbols on it.
Oh, okay. So we're on it now, round two, let's go! There's a leaderboard. Well, of course. The first one was.
He's my hero.
All right, ready? I have mid ladder two, go ahead, who's this?
I have miles to hot ladders.
Just if I want to plug in, if I'm using this as a formative assessment, I can see who's got how many answers of which and wrong in it. In turn, we kind of have a discussion about, why do we choose the answer, wrong answer. So it's really good review going on with this too. And a lot of fun. They have to compete here. It's healthy competition, as Rachel said.
What item do you find a prairie dog in?
Oops.
I think you get more points too, the quicker you do it.
Oh. What name American?
May Holmes Call.
No.
Wow, she's pretty smart.
No, so it takes me a setup.
What biome is very hot and rarely has rain? What do mostly men do in Indian country?
Sleep.
Keep it PG.
Oh, I gotta catch that.
What biome can do, what biome can you love?
Oh, yeah. Make it one more time, Johnny.
At least I got it right.
What region was basket weaving important in?
Sorry.
What definitely made Americans use the Southwestern Desert?
Mr. Donnelly.
No, it's not Thomas.
What biome is wet and humid?
Good girl.
Look at you. That's why he's the superintendent. The only one with formal training. Except he did not answer him in the form of a question, he didn't say "who is".
That's right.
So those are not valid.
So we just wanted to give you a taste of some of the fun. Yeah.
Thank you.
That's fun, I think.
Any questions?
I have a question. When you present these, can they be presented in a quiz format? Where it's a class quiz, and that's how their quiz is taken?
You know, I've done that one time, but you still have to go through a leaderboard. And so some of the kids that work a little bit slower, I don't want to put the pressure on them. It's more for really informal. I can take some mental notes or some anecdotal notes of how they're doing, but I wouldn't, because of their time. There's not a way to do it.
So there's no way to take the time piece out of it?
It's not as far as like the points for the game, it was still going to be less points. So, not in this one, no.
So without, it's kind of like at the high school, they have clickers to take a test, or a quiz. So it's very similar. It's very good.
When you make the questions, there is a spot to choose how much time they have.
Okay.
I think you might have unlimited.
You could have given us just a little bit more time. A little bit more time processing matter. Does anybody have any questions?
Very fun.
Very good. Thank you, ladies. Or we'll be back on next time and say, let's close down in broccoli. Okay. As you close down, we're going to move along. Board of Education matters, Mr. Throne. Mr. Winter. Item 6, curriculum and instruction, Mr. Weaver, who is not here.
He's not here, he's currently at the Ida Call Conference with Janet, and so he will be reporting next, at our next meeting.
Okay, very good. Finance and operations, Mr. Barnum.
Oh, good evening, everyone. We have our audited financial results that we're going to go over. Actually, Jacob from Yo and Yo is going to present the audited financial results for 1617.
Okay, I am not an elementary student, but I want to be one again. We didn't have anything like that when we were young. Good evening, thank you for having me. My name is Jacob Sobczynski. I'm the principal in charge of the audit for the June 30, 2017 fiscal year audit. So it's my responsibility as the auditor to make sure that we provide an opinion. Whether a good opinion or a bad opinion, that's our job, is to provide an opinion on the financial statements as a whole. So the first thing I'd like to talk about is that opinion that we provided, that we did on the financial statements. And what basically we do is we say the financial statements as they're written are presented in accordance with the laws of accounting. And because they're reported in accordance with those laws, we call that a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion. So that's a good thing, you passed. Congratulations.
Good.
Nice.
And then that concludes my presentation. We'll go over some of the numbers real quick, but it's really important to understand that that's a good thing. We don't want to have a clean opinion, we don't want to have any modifications of an opinion, or that the statements aren't correct. And so we were able to do that this year. The way we get to that opinion is we do a lot of internal control testing. A lot of our time is spent on internal controls so that we understand what controls the district has in place to prevent and detect thought and fraud in that. And so we do a lot of testing. We also do some other things, we do about 99 areas of compliance that MDE wants us to do. So we go through a litmus test of about 99 areas of compliance, all of those came back clean. So congratulations on that, too. And then, Ms. Sweet had the luxury of being selected as your major program. Because you receive so much in a certain threshold in federal dollars, every year we select a federal program to test. So this year we selected Special Ed, and we ran through the gauntlet of all the tests. There's about 60 or 70 areas of compliance we test.
I think it was 160.
Feels like it, doesn't it? But as a result of all of that testing, we get to that opinion, but we also discover no material weaknesses. Which means that you're doing things the way you're supposed to do, including Special Ed, to make sure that you're spending the money appropriately, that you're going through the proper controls, and the controls are in place along the process to detect and prevent thought from the statement. I don't know why I keep saying it like that. So no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, no question costs, and no findings. So that's pretty clean. We did have two areas where we thought the district could improve upon. One was in budgeting, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. And the other one is timeliness of reporting and reconciliations. We had a little bit of difficulty getting some information timely this year. We finished the audit today, it's dated today, which wasn't a rush on our side. It still went through all our normal processes and procedures, but it was a slow process for us. We had to come back out and do some extra work and provide some additional correspondence. So areas to improve upon, for sure. When we look at the numbers, and we won't spend too much time on numbers, but this is a balance sheet, so this is a snapshot in time, and remember, we're looking, we're looking at June 30. So we're a little bit late in information, but still it's a snapshot in time where you were at that period. General fund, that's our operations, that's the biggest fund for the most part. Cash, we have on hand, that's to get us through the state aid shortfall, because we don't get state aid payments in the month of September. So we have to carry a little bit of cash or borrow money to spend. Due from other governments, that's the July and August state aid payments that we'll receive, that you received this year. And then on the liability side, we owe money for July and August payroll and related accruals. And then there's some other liabilities in there too, that accounts payable and things like that. And then the next slide, how we get to the fund balance part. At the end of the year, we had $9.1 million of fund balance. But we set aside, you, the district, has assigned a portion of that for future healthcare costs. So really the ending fund balance is about $5.8 million, which is available for the most part. So a small increase over the prior year. When we look at a measurement, when we look at a measurement piece of that, the treasury and MDE has specifically said that you should use a percentage of your unrestricted revenues. The old method, we used to use unrestricted expenses, or your expenses. As a rule of thumb, a good place to be is about 15% to 20%. You're within that. Now in the district, we have a do not go below 10% that the board has set as a threshold. So 15% to 20%, we consider that healthy, on the way of being healthy. So from a revenue and expenses standpoint, we'll look at the detail which makes this up. But again, net change in the general fund, about $700,000 plus. We set some of that aside for those healthcare costs, the future healthcare costs, to safeguard some of that. All the other funds, that's really just your food service program and debt refunding. Those look like big numbers because we refunded a piece of debt this year. So those are really inflated because all the debt's recorded as revenue, that's not. We can go to the next one, Sam. So that budgeting piece, this looks really good. 100% accuracy, and on 99.5% accuracy on the expenditures. The comment we made, it's in the management letter, which you basically can think of electronically. The comment relates to budgeting within functions. When we evaluate the budget, some line items were over budget, some were under budget. All in all, we were within an acceptable range, but within those functions in the budget, need a little bit of tweaking, need a little bit of enhancement when you're going through the budgeting process. We just, we encourage you to spend a little bit of time looking at those budgets by function. So, where do we get revenue from? In our infinite wisdom, back in 1993, we passed this thing called Proposal A. Proposal A says, regardless of how much you collect locally, you'll still get the same amount of funding per kid. This year it was about $7,500, next year you actually had a little bit of an increase. That's $7,500 per kid. So we take the state amount and the local amount, compare that. So when you think about it, Proposal A, our funding source, really it's about 93% comes from state aid and local sources, which is how you get your funding. So again, not a whole lot of room for generating new revenues other than increasing student counts. On the expenditure side, we, there's, I mean, two overwhelming categories. Instruction is teachers in classrooms, and supporting services is everything that we need to support them. In a district your size, we typically see about a 60/40 split in those. And you guys are well within that range, about 60/40, 60% instruction, 40% everything else. District to your size and what you're doing in your demographics, that's about what we see. Those are really comparative to last year, about the same numbers, actually. Revenues and expenses over time, again, you see this trend of increasing revenues and increasing expenses. It's threefold as to why that goes up. We want to have revenues and expenses somewhat level, and this year we were pretty close. To go to the next slide, those three factors that really impact this is this slide right here, which I love. I love to show this slide, and I think I said that last couple of years. This is pretty unique in the state of Michigan to see student counts going up like this. Means you're doing something right here in Oxford. You're doing something right. I don't know what it is yet, but it's doing something right. To see student counts like go up like this in a district in Michigan is really very, very hard to see. Usually we're seeing this, right now everything's pretty much leveled up. You guys have continued to grow here, thanks to the special programs, the programs you use, like you guys do with the OPA program and other things. So it's great to see. So that's why we see those increases in expenses and revenues, increase in students. Another factor of that, Sam, is the foundational allowance, we talked about that. Back in 2010, 12, the state cut that foundational allowance, we see that. We're just now inching up, actually this year we surpassed it. I think it's a $120 increase, or 1%. 1% increase in your state aid allowance. So it takes up to $7,600, and some change.
So we're back to 2011.
Back to 2011. Yep. Now, the biggest impact to the increase in costs is this right here, MIPSers. This is a real problem in the state of Michigan, is the unfunded MIPSers program. And next year, we're going to be talking about the unfunded healthcare portion of the MIPSers program, which is the OPEB. You're going to be hearing that term from me next year. This just specifically rates the unfunded portion of the retirements, of the pensions of the staff. We're capped on out-of-pocket costs by legislation at about 26%. That's that green line. That's the most you can pay out of pocket. However, the state has said, we've got some extra money. So instead of increasing the foundational allowance, we're going to provide you a new program. Congratulations, it's called 147C. You get it every month on your state aid, you really don't get the cash. The cash comes in, and the next month it goes out to pay portions of the unfunded MIPSers program. So really, that MIPSers rate is 36% right now. So that means every dollar payroll you spend, 36 cents of it plus, goes to pay for the retirees, the health, the retirement fund. That's a huge cost. That's a huge cost, and it's the problem in the state, and we need to fix that as a state. With that in mind, just some things to think about going forward. Michigan as an economy, remember that Proposal A, how we're funded that, is through sales tax for the most part. So your sales tax is collected and it's redistributed, is, that's the foundational allowance, how we get that dollar. As the economy grows, as Michigan grows, that hopefully would go up too. So as Michigan, I mean, you've got to pay attention to how Michigan economy is doing to learn how much you're going to get each year. Rising fringe benefit costs, we talked about, retirement rate increases, we talked about. We're owning state revenue sources, the more that leaves the state through buying, right? Because it's sales tax, the more Amazon purchases, the more stuff we're buying, not paying sales tax on. As a state, we're losing funding by that. Enrollment trends, you guys are good here, we talked about that. But as a state, we're struggling still with getting students, new families. There was a mass access in 11, 12, 13. We've seen that in the state kind of level up, but still that hasn't come back into the state yet. Pension obligation, you've got about $80 million on your books, has your portion of that pension obligation on the state. $80 million. Next year, like I said, we're going to have that OPEB come on, that's probably two-thirds of that. So another $60 million of your portion of that goes on the books. New accounting pronouncements, early warning legislation, not to be worried about here. This year we did that healthcare fund, that setting up that separate amount to fund those future obligations for the healthcare stuff. And we also, as a district, transferred about $475,000 to a capital project fund this year. Does help, to help level out the general fund, so we're not doing big projects out of there. We can do a project out of a special fund. All in all, it was a great year. You guys are a great district. We appreciate all the hard work Denise put in, Sam, and Connie, and the rest of the business office. And we appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you, Jacob. Any questions? Mr. Donnelly.
Could you speak a little bit about the timeliness of reporting and reconciliation? Yeah, so we, I'm going to get the dates probably wrong here, but we usually, our schedule is pretty tight as an auditing firm. We do 90-some schools throughout the state. So we set schedules about a year at a time. Usually when we leave the field, we set next year's schedule ahead. That date was agreed to by the business office and us, and we say that's the date. We came out, and we do some preliminary work in June or July, and then we come out for that audit week. When we came out for that audit week, there were some things that weren't done. There were some reconciliations that still needed to be completed. Journal entries still needed to be completed. So we did some work in mid-September, I think, Connie, mid-September, and we couldn't finish that week. So we got a final trial balance two weeks ago, two weeks ago, and have been working in the last two weeks to finalize the audit. So that hurts us, and that hurts the team here too, just behind on a couple of things.
Is it a possibility to set that date earlier, or does it not matter? I mean, is there, I know there's a time when you have state requirements to have certain things done by certain times. Does this fall into that category of you have to have your own budget done by a certain date?
November 1st is the final date. So everything has to be done the 5th, which is your reporting, internal reporting. This gets submitted to the audit, to the state and the ISD.
So it's just a matter of maybe scheduling a little bit earlier so we have some more time?
I would say it's probably more of a matter of being more prepared. But we can move that date as the business office needs it necessary, but about being prepared when we're here. A little selfish, Sam.
Mr. Chair. Follow-up question. Mr. Don. Was there additional costs having you come back the second time?
There were.
Approximately, how much?
I don't have the final bill yet. I can't answer that question. We have a clause in our contract, it's a 25% increase. If we have to reschedule and there's delays that are caused by this year. So 25% of the bill, maybe, I don't know, maybe $9,000? My last follow-up question, Mr. Throne, is if we know what you're in advance about when some things do, how do we miss that big of a target?
Great question.
Okay. I don't have any more. Okay.
Thank you.
That'll be a conversation that we. That'll be a conversation that we discuss, and I'll get on it, and we'll report back to the board. All right. Any other further questions for Jacob? Thank you, Jacob. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll shake hands again. Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you. Nice to see you. Thank you, sir. Have a good night, everybody. One more. We've got to get you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Item number eight, human resources.
Yes. I did want to inform the board this evening. We are setting in motion an increase for our guest teacher rates. So, as of November 6th, we are raising the daily rate for our guest teachers. There is a, basically, we pay $85 a day now. We're raising it to $95 a day. And we're also tweaking our long-term substitute rates to correlate with that. There is a statewide substitute teacher shortage, and we've been dealing with that on the local level, on the county level. Today, we met with our contracting company, looking at, you know, informing them of the increase, and also, you know, strategizing in terms of marketing and how we can attract more substitutes. We're, I'm meeting at the county level on Thursday to discuss that as well with them. But every district is dealing with this, and, you know, I think it all really goes back to a shortage in teachers at this point. We've struggled with that. So, we will continue to work on it and continue to, Jenny left us. We don't have Jenny any longer, so. So, but, you know, we are inviting those interested in substituting. We're, you know, we're happy to provide information and, you know, working on that as well.
Okay. Very good.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Stafford.
Thank you. Is there, for the substitute teachers, is there, first of all, that seems horrifically low to me. $95, is that like standard?
It is comparative within the county.
Really?
Some districts are paying $90 a day. They've raised up to $90 a day, and then, they're giving like a bonus to equate to $95. So, you know, we are, if you work so many days. So, we're setting the $95 a day rate. And yes, you know, I mean, it is, it is something that...
For $100, I've got a lot better stuff to do with my time than waste the whole day in the school.
Well, we don't want to discourage anyone.
I understand, but...
I understand.
I'm just thinking that, you know, I just want to make sure that we're at least competitive.
We are, that will bring us to a very competitive rate, and I think at the end of the year, we'll reanalyze that, because, you know, if we, as a district, feel we need to do more, we will do more.
What kind of qualifications do you need to be a substitute?
The ideal is that you're a certified teacher. We also accept substitutes who have 90 credit hours, and it has to be credit hours from an affiliated accredited college that graduates teachers. So, with that, you get a substitute permit through the state.
Got you.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Yes?
Thank you. There was, and part of Mr. Throne's update to us included the opportunity, potentially, to start conversations with student teachers with, you know, at universities and that kind of thing. Is there, is there an opportunity for us to promote that, or to encourage, you know, to take that wider?
We actually, we actually spoke about that today as well. Getting some partnerships set up, so we're working on that.
That's great. Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Any further questions? Okay. Thank you, Nancy. Item nine, Student Services. Denise?
In your board pack, there was a memo for schools of choice for second semester, and there's a motion on the agenda.
Yep. Very good. I have a motion on the table. Mrs. Shaper.
Move to approve schools of choice for the second semester trimester of the 2017-2018 school year. Teenage through ninth grade unlimited, sixth through eleventh unlimited, expert virtual academy.
Support. Support, Mrs. Guthrie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11, Unscheduled Audience Participation. No? Okay. Item 12, Clarification. Mr. Throne. Item 13, Scheduled Activities. Mrs. Bono, these are all beyond the website, I ask every time, but I just want to make sure that...
There. Just want to remind everybody, the next meeting is on a Wednesday.
Correct.
Tuesday.
Correct. All right.
Same time, 6:30?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll have to shake up.
Final Board Comments. Mr. Bailey.
Nothing at the time.
Okay. Mrs. Shaper.
Thank you for having us, Mr. Brown. I always like coming to my home school. I thought that was great. Mrs. Viviano did a very nice job. Please tell her thank you for us.
Absolutely.
Mr. Stafford.
Thanks again, Mr. Brown. That's great. Make us feel like we don't know anything. I appreciate it. In front of your kids, even. Thank you.
Mr. Donnelly.
Mr. Brown, thank you. Thanks for leaving a couple rooms open. Just love seeing the new stuff, the trying stuff. It's really good. Thank you.
Mrs. Guthrie.
Thank you, sir. Thanks to Mrs. Viviano. I want to echo what Heather said, and I just love it when we get to come and have the students do something like that. And Mr. Brown, thank you for having us, too, for me. And Jacob, and Sam, and Connie, thank you so much for working so hard to get us updated and in the loop on what's happening with the finances. And I want to thank Mr. Throne for his continued updates to us and all of his work, because his work, if you read his updates, he's everywhere. This man is everywhere to me. So, he's out there, really working for our district, and so, I just wanted to put that out there, because it's really nice to know that we're in good hands. Just a little extra.
Okay. I just want to thank Mr. Brown. Thanks for the books and our name. It's always nice to have your name on something that's going to be here for a while. So, I do appreciate that gesture. It's very nice. Please let your students know. It's very nice to see that, you know, they got up, they made a presentation. It was well thought out, well put together. They presented themselves very well. And those are some of the things that I think you take the little extra step. You know, it's the, speak, we speak well, they spoke, all spoke very, very well. They were all dressed for the occasion. Very nice to see. And those are some of the things that I think, just the small touches that make the difference. And, you know, when you're in the world and you're competitive, it's the small touches that set you apart from somebody else. You guys are doing a nice job. And I wanted to, again, thank Tim and the staff for the hard work these past, oh, I would say, four to six weeks. You know, we've got some stuff, the bond coming up, and they've been working after-hours to make sure that the needs, any questions are answered. And again, it's, these are things that have to be done on their own time. It's not something that we can just, "Hey, Tim, what's going on?" Or, "Hey, Sam, what's going on?" At 2:00 in the afternoon, when their attention is supposed to be on the day-to-day. So, I want to thank them. I sent Sam a little text this morning at, was it 6:30, some, this morning, and asked him if he needed anything, and sure enough, I got right back. Same with Tim. I'll send him something at, you know, 9, 10:00 at night, sure the last person he wants to hear from at that point. I do appreciate it, and you're not the only two. Everybody in this district is pulling in the same direction, so I do appreciate that. Mr. Throne.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for hosting us tonight. And, yeah, real good news financially. We could be a million different places, and I'm glad we're not. I'm glad that we keep, we keep being able to produce, and that really speaks to the quality of programming, K through 12. And at the end of the day, the hard work of our teachers, our administrators, our bus drivers, everybody works together to create what we call education inside of Oxford Schools. So, I'm very appreciative of everyone's hard work.